...at 2:00 AM at 4:00 PM is now called to order. Members present is Donald Seabrook, Clark, Charles McCann, President, Thomas Ramey, Commissioner.
And before marking, Commissioner, please absolutely wait and see, since this is a changing time, he may show up here.
First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve amendments of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April the 19th, 2011 at 4:00 PM.
So, all second vote, and all yes vote, motion carries. There he is.
Let the record state that Charles McCann, Commissioner, is present. Next thing on the agenda is Hannah Ball, residence of Tony Branch. Would you like to come to the podium and speak for the Commissioner?
I can do it from here.
You're good.
I'm good. Well, as you all know, our bridge is in pretty deplorable condition and we have, I'm having a petition. Actually, one of the other residents is running and apparently they're running a little bit late, but we have, I believe, 29 signatures on there and that doesn't include, I would say, there's still a third at least of the residents that I hadn't been able to approach just because of my schedule and theirs who signed it. We're, we're in a position where our health and our jobs can be compromised because we can't pass through the water safely. I've been flooded in now 22 times since January and that is blocked at both ends. There are two bridges. There's one at the mouth of Tony's Branch, which is the low water bridge, and then there's another bridge approximately two miles, I would imagine, from my home. This is Tanya Jones. She's another resident who also gets blocked. Ernest and Rebecca Mines just have come in. They actually have the petition as well as pictures of the bridge from both ends. Did you agree with them? Okay. We just ask to have your support in approaching the state and putting us in contact with the right people to get us in a position to get a bridge built so we can go to work and be productive members of the community. I mean, you can't, you can't hold down a job if your only excuse is it's raining. You know, we, we keep a suitcase packed at all times. I stay home because I'm scared that my child will be stuck at school and I'll be unable to go out and get him. I have a infant who's 18 months and another son who's 10. I've had one heart attack myself and there are lots of folks with much more compromising health issues than I have who are residents of Tony's Branch. And there are many times that the only way that we could get medical assistance would be through Health Net. And because it is a flood prone area, there are very limited areas where Health Net can land and I'm one of the places that you couldn't even get to where one of the locations that they could land because you would be blocked by water on both sides.
Just for information, Tony's Branch, how many people actually live between these bridges we're talking about? How many residents?
There's a total of nine families, I think, that get completely blocked between the two bridges. There's a total, like I said, we have 29 or 30 on the petition here that get blocked. In addition to the secondary bridge, there's also a spot there where the road is low lying and the water goes over that. It's not just the residents, though, that are affected. You know, there are people that travel that way every day, daily, who work in Tate Valley, who work in Nitro, who work in Huntington. You know, there's a lot of folks, I think, from the, I believe it's the Salt Rock area. Phil was telling me yesterday that he had family there that went that way to work. So it's not only the folks who live out here, it's the folks that use that as their means of transportation to get back and forth to work. As far as I know, the majority of the residents of that area are working people.
Right.
And we'd all like to continue to be.
And we would like to help.
Thank you. We'd like to have your help. We, would you all like to see, can I show you the pictures?
I think anything would be helpful. It might be benefiting us and the, the people still. See what's going on. Is it, I understand that the road that goes into this area has hit on the old county road or is...
There are, there are two things that could be done. We could fix the bridge and elevate it, or there is an old county road that bypasses the whole thing that would make it to where we could get out on the front end and that way the people could at least get to Quarter G. They would be doing in effect what we're doing now. You know, whenever we get out the back way, and sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. If you work in Charleston, you're driving probably 60 miles round trip out of the way just to get to work with gas at 409 a gallon. Sometimes you're able to get to school one time and sometimes you're not and...
But the position that the state has taken at this point is that this is a private bridge?
No.
Have they taken a position?
They have not taken a position. Quite frankly, I had contacted FEMA first. Some of the other residents, some of the ladies whose names on this petition have met with one of the former district managers of West Virginia highways and he had promised her a bridge and we all know how those things go. I approached FEMA and I was under the understanding for over a year that FEMA was going to help us and then FEMA informed me that because it was a state owned county maintained road, state or county maintained road, that FEMA was not in position to help us either. But had it been a privately owned bridge, that FEMA would have helped us. Now they can't or won't. Here are the pictures installed on this end, I guess, somewhere around. This is the debris that fills the bridge daily because every time the water gets up, it's there. This is where you would go in from the main road and you could see what we have to drive through to access Tony's Branch. Even when the bridge is not flooded, because of the debris that washes through the bridge, it gets chipped away and chipped away and if you have a full sized vehicle, which one of mine is, you can't hardly clear it, the width of a Ford F-250 truck to pull a trailer with equipment, it's nearly impossible. And there are people, you know, the last flood, the Pains, who were some of our neighbors, they drove through with water up above the running boards because they had to get to work. Somebody's going to end up getting killed because you can't effectively call off work every time it rains and people of average means cannot go get a hotel room just with a possible forecast of rain. And, you know, you don't know if it's going to rain three quarters of an inch or an inch and a half and it only takes about a half an inch of rain as it stands right now to flood that bridge and it doesn't necessarily have to be at Tony's Branch. When it rains here in Hanlon or even in Putnam County, we get flooded. Mr. Ramey has been very kind. He's called me at home and I've appreciated everything he's done as do the other residents and he informed me that it wasn't something the county commission could do directly to get the bridge fixed. Is that correct, Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Is that what you told me? But we would very much appreciate any help that you can do to present this issue to the state and to try to get help there. I don't know if you all reviewed the petition or not, but again, it's attached here and we'll be glad to email and call the other to you all. Did you all see this or what?
No.
And there are, like I said, many more residents who have not signed it.
Would the DEP or Corps of Engineers do it down on Tony's Branch?
The FEMA had told me that if the creeks were dredged, that it would be the Army Corps of Engineers that would be responsible for doing that and they would have to get permits from the DEP. Now, that's been approximately three years ago. Would it help? Sure. Is the department fit? Absolutely not. You know...
That's what I was going to say. After conversations we've had, Kristi Schrex and I were out visiting the election precincts, so we stopped to look at the bridge and even if the creek was cleaned up completely, the bridge itself structurally is, it's a problem.
It, it very much is, yes, sir. Especially if you're driving a heavy vehicle, like I said, you know, and as you saw, there is so much removed from the bridge. The people that are driving through water, you can't tell where the bridge actually is and if you get off a quarter of an inch, it takes, what, four inches of moving water to float a full sized vehicle? So just because you think the road's there doesn't necessarily mean it is because we lose a little bit more of the structure every time it rains. Have I driven through it? Absolutely. I, I know that Ms. Jones drives through it on a regular basis to get to and from work. The bridge, like I said, the secondary bridge, more often than not, we can't pass it. But most of the folks that live down that road work in the Charleston area and so it's, it's a problem having to go out the back way, fuel costs, time and gas and being late for work.
I think what we had talked about, we called it disaster in waiting, didn't we? I mean, it's just a matter of time before someone, the water sweeps a car off that bridge.
Yeah, I've sat and watched my neighbors many, many times and I won't do it myself because I don't care how much gas is. I'll sleep beside the road before I'll drive through with my children, but, you know, I, sometimes you do what you have to do and I've sat and watched my neighbors go through with a car seat in a truck and drive through water that's above their tires and we sit in there thinking, oh my God, you know, and I want to follow right behind them, but I don't. I turn around and I go the long way. As you and I discussed, my husband and I live at campground and we are very fortunate. Sometimes he can go down there and say, he didn't get to come home for Easter. We were flooded out, if you remember, I think I talked to you Easter weekend, he did come home later on Easter Sunday. But often, you know, he can't stay there either and you have to get a hotel room. And when you're clearing $75 after working eight hours after taxes and you're spending a hundred on a hotel room and you're doing that 21 times in three months, you can see the problem there. And, you know, nobody wants to quit their job, nobody wants to lose their job and be a burden on the state or the county. And anything you guys can do, we'd appreciate. I thank you for calling the session.
Well, has the Department of Highways been over there to look at it?
They have. We've called them numerous times. Ms., Ms. Mines would probably be in a better position to answer those questions. I know if they do come out and they clear the debris, they don't do it as promptly as we would like, but we know that we're not the only road that has issues in Lincoln County too. And if I'm not mistaken, and she can comment on that, the last time she called them, they told her that they could not continue to come out each time that the road flooded or each time that the, the culverts got clogged, that we were going to have to take measures to get our separate bridge built. And if this were a privately owned bridge and we had the legal right to do so, I'm sure we would have already. Is that what they said?
This was not the last time I spoke with them, but it was earlier in the year, right before we began our petition. But what they told me at that time was that, that they could only come out so often and I understood that. They have been very good to come and clear the debris, but it takes one good rain to put it right back where it was and we can't expect them to continue to do that forever because as, as Ms. Ring said, they have other priorities that they must attend to and so we are very grateful for all the help we get, but we realize that many other people need help as well.
I would offer a motion on the table for us to send letters to the Department of Highways, Army Corps of Engineers, or any other agencies that would be able to assist the people of Tony Branch in correcting this problem, which is a dangerous problem for the residents of that, of that road.
I'll stand.
And to take immediate action.
So really, the solution is a elevated bridge, a new bridge that's going to be higher, otherwise we still haven't solved the problem.
Well, there are one of two. I mean, you could do the elevated bridge, which, you know, I'm not an engineer, I would think that would be the cheaper of the two solutions, or you could open up the old county road, which doesn't or doesn't bother, bypass those bridges.
There is, there is a lot of water down there. I've had to walk that way a few times to try and get to my place when I was flooded out and there's a large water that comes off the hill that I have to literally try and jump across even if it is, so you end up almost having the same issues.
Okay, so the bridge won't...
The bridge will be...
Okay. Those are the only two options and the bridge is probably the easier of the two and the least expensive, I would think, and engineer would be one to verify that, but that's what we would like, yes, sir.
Well, and I think that we need to assist and try to help any way we can, so we have a motion on the floor to send a letter to the appropriate agencies and as far as myself, I think maybe some phone calls with the letter might help, so. That being all yes vote, motion carries to send the letter to the agency, particularly Department of Highways and maybe the governor's office and that kind of thing to make sure that we tell them from this side of the table that it's an issue that needs to be resolved in some way. Okay, the motion carries and to do that and we'll begin work and I think still I would encourage each of you, probably already done, you're probably getting tired of doing it, but I'd still call, right, do anything you can to bring it to the attention and I definitely not neglect the Congressman Ray Hall. He may not be able to solve it, but he is good to respond to requests and get them to the appropriate agency, so I make sure that we, if we'll be contacted, it wouldn't hurt for y'all to do that also.
As far as the petition, Mr. McCann, do you want us, assuming to board that along with our letters?
Well, I think we need to make a copy of this if we could, so we would, could have that.
We brought copies for you.
Okay. We'd like to send those right along, so everybody knows what's going on. All right.
Thank you.
This, this your original, you want back?
Yes, sir, I can get it.
Okay. All right. Appreciate y'all coming in.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that you all are doing.
This day in time, you wouldn't think things like that would be an issue, but we know it does. I mean, there's too many problems out there and living in a rural county, it just makes it more difficult sometimes to get the attention it's needing.
We realize that we're not the only ones. We're just getting to the point now where it's not, if somebody gets hurt, it's win and so this is what's brought us here and we certainly thank you all for it.
Well, this has been maybe an unusual spring, but doesn't mean it's not going to happen again, but we've had an awful lot of water.
Next thing on the agenda is Grace Bogart.
Yeah. If you'd mind, I'd like to address you from here.
That'd be fine and welcome.
Yes, I'd like to address you in regards to pay revaluation, that's a part of the mineral that I own in Lincoln County. As a matter of fact, it's next door to these people. But I was supposed to have received a letter that was to inform me of a revaluation. I didn't get it. I'm sure it was sent, but I just wanted to get it. I had no explanation. By the time I realized, I'm procrastinating, I admit that, that it had increased to the point that it had, it was past time for the appeal. And the more I thought about it, with the, the way it increased, I thought, well, why have I got to lose? I'll go address them anyway and I've got nothing to lose. I own three quarters of the mineral on approximately 240 acres and this is in regards to the coal. It's in two different tracts that's all the same piece property. On three quarters of it, last year it was the, okay, I can't get my notes here. The evaluation on the three quarters of it stayed about the same. On a quarter of it, they raised it approximately $14,500.
On value.
On value. So by taxes this year on one, uh, three quarters of 76 acres is 300 and some dollars. On three quarters of 150 acres, it's only 29.56. So they're charging me more on three quarters of 76 acres than three quarters of 140, or 50 acres.
And I can speak to this very briefly, but the value is determined on not necessarily the acre size, but the quality of the coal and the location of the coal and they base that up on corridoring and those kind of things, but...
Well, they admitted they really didn't even know where it was because it's up to the Charleston.
Well, I mean, geological survey people is the ones that come in here and tell us, show us maps of where they've done it and all this. Where is it located? Is it on Little Coal River or is it somewhere...
Tony's Branch.
And that's the lady right here, also probably.
Okay.
They're beautiful.
We can't...
I did not know she was going to be here.
Y'all didn't plan any.
No.
Well, at least you get to see one of them. What we can do, we can't do anything actually ourselves at this juncture, but we can take the information and have the state tax people to look at it and see what they would recommend that we do, but...
Well, I spoke with them, although of course there was some people who did the evaluation. There was a lady in their office and she said, well, I have information that there's coal mines in that area. Well, I'm 72 years old and I have never heard of a coal mine in that area.
No, I, I don't think there's some close by on the coal, on the, get down toward McCorp on that area, but there, on the Little Coal, but not back in the area that you're talking about.
There has never been inquiries for lease or anything else in that area that I was ever aware of and if there's coal there, it's news to me.
Well, if it's...
But it, it, now, I didn't, I know my father did say it one time, if there was coal there and it was such a depth that it would never be mine.
Well, that's what you find. A lot of times there's coal, but it's not mineable or...
Not mineable.
Or it doesn't have a, you know, a good grade or something to it, so...
That was why he always told me, if there's coal there, it's an depth that it would never be mine.
Well, our objective as a commission has always been to make sure that the mineral owners are treated fairly and justly and not taxed improperly and those things, so we will look at it and, and if you can just, you know, where Judy has your phone number or not, but any information you can give us...
Well, I can, I don't have copies of this with me, but perhaps there's somewhere...
But if we get the information, we can get it across the board.
Here, yeah.
But the two tracts are right beside each other and the taxes went through and out of side on one and didn't do nothing on the other.
Well, and I don't know, wouldn't know what's...
It's like saying on one side of the street it is and the other side of the street it's not.
Right. And you never, could this be a clerk order on the state's part? I, I don't know, but it's their responsibility to...
But these are paid.
Make those decisions, but they have to have information to back that order they recommend and the final decision does lie with the county commission and that's when you talk about missing that deadline, that month of February is the month that we always have to do that and the state come down and work with us on that. But, but I'm sure that there's a mistake, if there's some way we can correct that, if that's what's been, you know, informational show, but we will check into it and find out everything.
Well, one, another thing I don't understand, it has dropped or is it? They dropped it down, not where it was that it drops and I spoke with the lady who did the tax audit and she said the evaluation for 11 has come down. It's not what it is now.
Well, I don't...
And it doesn't make sense.
With the new law that changed in regards to the evaluation meetings, I know that we have some in October now. Is this a...
Well, this is your next year, 2011. And see, that is the tax year 2010.
Oh, really?
And we wouldn't be able to take care of that in February because we take care of the 2011 and what you're going to be taxed on in 2011.
You can't do anything about water.
That's up to the commission. I was just trying to tape up the work for the session.
Well, what we'll do is keep the information and start with the assessors office and see what they tell us and then we'll go with the state and then we will call you and tell you what the...
I'll officially...
Well, and we will.
Because it's about $400 and it's less important than the other one, which is, might take $30.
Well, their, their information will say that that property has more value in coal than others and that may be true and may not be, but that's what we're basing on.
And the lady, the lady that owns the other, sort of hers didn't change either.
Well, the thing is, they may not know where your parcel exactly is either, you know, if you have a description of where it's at, that really helps them too.
They claim they know where it's at and I asked her, I said, well, where do you have it and she never did tell me, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
But if she says something, Tony's...
They know where it's at.
We can, they can find it on Tony's Branch as close as they'll need it.
You just go to her house.
Start digging.
Yes. I'm sure she's going to say there's no coal here. She doesn't want mining on that property.
That's not certain.
But like I said, I would appreciate whatever you can do.
Well, and we, you know, it's, we appreciate you coming down and bringing it to our attention, otherwise, you know...
Well, it's somewhat late, I realize that, but the more I thought about it, all I've got to do is to...
Well, that's, we're glad you came and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
But we will get back to you.
All right. I appreciate it.
And we know if you come back and get on our case.
I might just say it. I might just say it.
Next thing on the agenda is Jim Gayfar.
Welcome, Jim.
Would you like me to...
If you'd like, be in a good position or feel comfortable with that pose.
Well, as I think all of you know, I'm the organizer of the annual festival at the dam that we'll be having for the 13th time this year and I want to start by thanking all the commission for supporting this event and helping it grow and, and I think I wouldn't be overstating to say that we're the envy of, of most of the Bluegrass community within 100 miles in any direction because of the event. It's a great event. Last year we had a door prize, it was donated by Rap 60 Music in Barbersville and we had signups and part of the reason to do that was to get a mailing list so that we could notify people in the future and we found that, that probably half of the folks were from outside Lincoln County and actually quite a few from other states in West Virginia. One of the things that we're limited with there at the dam is there's no ability for anyone to bring a camper or an RV or camp and spend the weekend. And so what we find is frequently people leaving early in the evening because they don't want to drive that road after dark and particularly when they're not familiar with the area. And in a lot of cases, they're just tired, they've not had the opportunity that they would have if they had a camper to go back and lay down and take a nap and then take in the evening show. A lot of times they get beat up in the heat of the day, which we moved from August to June and, and the last couple of years, I think that's really been nice, the weather's been good. And so what my wife and I decided to do, you know, we've seen that people, if they'll come all the way out to the dam, that if we had something maybe even a little closer, a little more accessible and more importantly, where they could camp, that that would be a good thing. It would be more of a traditional Bluegrass festival experience. They come, we're going to have it for three days. They can come on Friday, spend all three days camp and we're having it at the fairgrounds, the memorial fairgrounds. The request on our part is just for a little bit of help, I guess you'd say. We have tried to plan in such a way that we haven't overextended ourselves. We don't want to, we're not in it to try and make money, but we don't want to lose too much money, so what we're proposing is if the commission could underwrite a third of our budget, we would, this will be a ticketed event. We've kept the ticket price perhaps a little too low as I'm sitting and sweating as it comes up this year. We've set it at $20 for advanced ticket price for all three days, including free camping. Our budget is approximately $10,000 and so that means we would have to have 500 paying customers to break even. I'm thinking that like with the dam, it may take a few years to build up to that level, but at the same time, we thought it was worthwhile to try and make the effort. If the county commission could underwrite a third of the budget, that would be $3,500, we would offer free admission to all Lincoln County residents and hopefully, as is the case with the dam, most of the people that go there would then come to this thing and actually I think have a, a better experience from the standpoint of the jamming that goes on night after the show among the campsites and things of that nature. We're just trying to offer a wholesome family event for all the people that enjoy this kind of music and if the commission did not see fit to or does not feel it has the, the budget to underwrite a third of it, we could do something as an alternative like a half off for 2,500 for Lincoln County residents. We'll just ask for driver's license, a utility bill, a tax receipt, anything that would show residency in West Virginia at the gate and I think that would be relatively simple and I think it would be worthwhile. But anything that the county can assist us with, we'd appreciate. I don't know if you have any questions?
Well, I just, I do appreciate the effort that you all have done down through the years of making the, the event at the lake very successful. Is there, if we would agree to help this year, does that mean that we would not ever revisit bringing it back to the lake?
I'd love to have a fall festival at the dam.
If we could get taping and...
Yeah, that's the whole, the key really. And even for that matter, it's not necessarily that you have to have a hookups because people that do this occasionally encounter that at, at certain festivals. They're not always held at campgrounds that have full hookups. They'll load their water tank and they'll bring some gas for generators and they'll come on and some people tent camp and some with RVs. If we even had permission to use the softball field for that and open it up for people to camp without hookups, that would be a benefit.
And the other thing is, there is a private guy building a campground in proximity to the lake and, and I think, well, that would be... building a campground in proximity to the lake, and I think, well, that would be something that might help him if we could do something our own and then have that as a backup.
Right, yeah, and if you say that there's camping and people come and the field's full, you can say, "Well, there's the campground right down the road here", or if they want full hookups, which I'm sure they'll have. Yeah, I've not entered into any long-term agreement with the fairgrounds, although I do appreciate that they're making the facility available at no charge, the only thing they're doing is they're running a concession stand, so if they can reap any benefit from that, they will.
Well, I think it's, I think it's good, I think it brings us a group of people, as you expressed, from outside Lincoln County, but there's a certain supportive group of people who really
Well, I get phone calls, of course, every year leading up to it, and invariably, when somebody calls, and usually because they've seen one of the groups that we have, their professional traveling group's websites, and they say, "Hey, they're going to be in West Virginia, I live in eastern Kentucky, that's not too far", they call up, they want directions, they want to know how much it costs, and when I tell them it's free, they say, they laugh or they say, "Seriously?", "No, are you kidding", things of that nature, I don't think there are many events of the caliber that we put on here anywhere in the country that are free, and most, that's why I say with ours that we're going to take it at $20 for the whole weekend, that's late seventies, early eighties pricing. That's most festivals now, $30 to $40 a day, is what they price it.
Okay, any discussion about the commission?
Is this something that you'll take action on today?
When do you need a, when do you need a decision?
I'm just waiting to hear from you, I'll be pushing the event as the best I can in either event, but actually, I am going to print flyers, send out an order for 5,000, full color glossy flyers, hopefully within the next two weeks, and that would be a benefit if the county was going to do that, to be able to include that reference, and if it is going to be free admission for Lincoln County residents, to include that on the flyer as well.
So if we gave you a decision in the next meeting in '19, that would be sufficient?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, is that agreeable?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda, excuse me, is energy efficiency and conservation grant grant H VAC project, we have a final pay request in the amount of $29,456.35, which Lincoln County Commission's portion of that would be $23,463.55, remaining $5,992.80 will be paid from the $200,000, the West Virginia Division of Energy grant, I need a motion that we can authorize payment from the County Commission's funds of $23,463.55, I get Mr. McCann authorization to sign this request.
So, and just for information's sake, I did meet with the people from the Region Two, and Rick Mattel, and two people from Castop Tecton, and went through the budget and some of the issues, but we were able to resolve it, and this amount certainly is within what should be, I mean, they had more expense than this, but it was some of its oversight on their part, they were really talking about maybe $50,000, but it's really, they were hidden things as they put it through, so. Got a motion in second, oh yes, motion carries, paid to $23,463.55. Again, I think Rick's not here, but we should certainly thank him for working on this project and making sure that it went through and got done without any real bumps in the road, and he's done a good job again.
Yeah. Probably it's not. Okay, Rick's not here, Craig's not here, so we'll jump down to our hearts vendor, to the community center, and then our corporal community center.
Other than Winston's still working on the tax collection, things like that, working out well.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't have a lot, just as you probably know, we've gotten started on the roof, fixing the multi-purves from the roof, and that's kind of along, this has started about a week ago, rain has set them back a couple of days, but I'm sure that they finish pretty soon on that, just to note, we've rented out, we've come to an agreement with Amanda Dunlap, who has a photography business, and we are renting a room to her for $100 a month, and that's the smaller room, she has access to an exterior door and the interior lock, so she's able to bring all her stuff in there, just to leave it, we had discussed her bringing stuff in and out, but due to the fact that we had some NA and AA meetings set up, and they've been postponed due to activities of the guy who was doing that, we've just gone and let, not had and let her have the whole room, you know, for the whole month to herself, and she can afford to pay $100 a month, which I think is a pretty good deal for somebody, you know, who's got a small business like that in the area, that's the kind of stuff we want to try to do there, to help out as much as possible, but that can also help us with some of the operating costs and some of the behind-the-scenes stuff, that we need some extra funding for, plus help her keep up that room, she'll hang pictures, and she had even mentioned to me yesterday about doing some painting, we needed to paint the room anyway, and she wanted to, she wanted to do some painting in there, I guess, to screws it up for her pictures and things like that, so, we'll discuss that as a board, but I don't foresee that being a problem for her to go ahead and do that, and if it incurs a lot of calls, we may ask to help her out on that, other than that, with our NAA, NA meetings and AA meetings, like I said, have been postponed, we are in contact with Dr. Smith and Chuck McCormick to see if we can get those set back up, which are a good thing, I think Dr. Smith does some in other parts of the county, and this, Mr. McCormick, he does some in other parts of the county, however, his evenings are filled with other family opportunities, or family things that he needs to take care of, so he's kind of stepped back from that, so we're hoping to get somebody to come over there and start those up again, we did have a few people to show up from the meetings, and I think it's a good thing, but they don't necessarily need that same little room, they could use a multi-purves room, or we've got a couple smaller areas they may be able to utilize, so, if they get back there, we'll be able to do that. Last couple of things that I have, unfortunately, we lost a member of the board in resignation, Leanne Brown, who was one of the original board members, decided to resign, we had a long discussion, myself and the rest of the board, over that, because it's hard to lose somebody who works that hard, it's hard to lose somebody who knows people in the community, and people appreciate her, it's hard to, it's hard to, I guess, take over all the work that somebody does when they go, and we're having to do that, because Leanne's a lot, and we appreciate, not only with the community center, she's got a, she's got a big family, and she's got a lot of things on her plate, and so she's decided that, I don't know, I don't want to call it prioritizing, that would be my word, but she's got a lot of things that she takes care of, and in my personal opinion, I think she's done a great feat by putting family first, you know, not that she's take, not that she's not putting the Corporal Community Center in a priority position, but she's, she's got that type of heart, she's got to help people, she wants to help people.
Maybe she can help you, just the volunteers.
Well, that's what we, we've discussed that, what I would like to see, a lot of the young people in the area really like her, and she was, she helped us organize some weekly events and some events for the young people in the area, she's got great ideas, and in hopes of not totally losing her, I would, you know, I'm going to go to the board and plan on discussing possibly, if she would want to, doing some type of youth outreach or a youth program and overseeing that for us, which, you know, that would, that would be up to her, it would be strictly a volunteer position, and she would, she would report to us on what she would want to do and things like that, and I'm sure we'll probably go along with it, because she does have some real good ideas, so I'm going to recommend to the board that we ask her to do some activities for the young people in the community and to help us out on that, and due to that vacancy, we sent you all some, a list of names that were brought up by other board members to possibly replace Leanne, and we just ask that as soon as possible, you all could fill that, fill that void, and we can have a full board again, and we can keep things going with the summer coming up, and I think we've got some good ideas and good activities planned, and hopefully, we can keep those going, and with members on the board that are, you know, that are in the community, and there are some that don't have jobs, that can spend a lot of time there and want to spend a lot of time there, they can offer a lot, and some of those names are on the list.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we may need to add in a vaporax to open up the position, but I'm sure that they'll take your all's recommendation to kind of work through that, so that we can get to jump through the hoop and do that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys stepping up and keeping the thing going out there.
Next thing, new bills, must I need a motion to prove the bills are submitted for payment?
So, second.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the toleration orders are submitted by Tracy Dunsys, sir.
So, move.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Griffithsville T-Ball Lake.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Gavin Valley Wildcat Youth Football League.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Lincoln County Youth Soccer.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Gavin Valley Wildcat Youth Football League.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the toleration orders are submitted by Tracy Dunsys, sir.
So, move.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Griffithsville T-Ball Lake.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Gavin Valley Wildcat Youth Football League.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $1,000 to the Lincoln County Youth Soccer.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program application for the Lincoln County Fairs and Festivals in the amount of $10,000, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Motion second, this group discussion, did we get one earlier for $8,500 or something?
That was for our bluegrass gospel.
So, that's two different?
Yes.
All right, all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the appointments done in vacation, Lincoln County Commissioner Donald Seagood Clark as follows, Mary Jane Martin as executor to the estate of Colby Martin, Carrie Kim Matthews, the district's administrator of the estate of William H. Matthews, Carrie Kim Matthews as administrator of the estate of Helena E. Matthews, Barbara Dunlap as executor to the estate of Danny Lemon.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program application for the Lincoln County Fairgrounds in the amount of $10,000, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a donation amount of $500 to the Lincoln County High School Forensics team to attend a summer forensics program.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the transfer of appointment of Kristy Liam Scrack from the County Clerk Judiciary to the Election Division, effectively later first 2011, with a salary of $20,400.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
Kristy, you did a very good job.
I'll second that.
I need a motion to prove the drawdown request number one, in the amount of $2,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the West Hamlet Volunteer Fire Department and the project completion, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the drawdown request number one, in the amount of $2,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Allen Creek Volunteer Fire Department and the project completion, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the drawdown request number one, in the amount of $2,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Dugald Volunteer Fire Department and the project completion, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation amount of $3,500 to the Women's Club of Hammond for the renovation of the playground at the Hammond Lions Club Field.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove an inter-office budget revision and a coal severage transfer in $130,000 from O-2401-566-200 to O-2401-455-9200.
What's the numbers representing that?
That's transfer of funds is 566 and 459 to capital projects.
So, move.
I'll second that. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an inter-office budget revision and a coal severage transfer in $35,000 from Water Project 566-200 to the Alcohol Woodville Water Project.
So, move.
I'll second that. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the budget revision is submitted, to be submitted to the State Tax Department for everyone, yes, sir, it's in your folder.
So, move.
I'll second that, we don't have any that we have any changes, we have a problem about this.
Just some cleanup, most of it's the $200,000 on the federal grant that we received from the Energy Efficient Grant, money coming in that we have to transfer it over to the fund to pay.
For some reason, they changed, it started out in Region Two, playing developments, to take care of the federal money, then they decided to send it out to the counties and let us be responsible for it.
I need a motion to prove
I see, I don't think I asked for an all yes, all yes voted on that, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the employment of Kyra Turner as a judiciary clerk in the office of the County Clerk for probationary period of 90 days and a rate of pay of $1,350 per month.
So, move.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need the motion to approve the drawdown request number one, in the amount of $1,600 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Lincoln EMS and the project completion, and give Charles S. McCann President authorization to sign this stated document.
So, move.
Second. Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an inter-office budget revision from the office, for the office of the Circuit Clerk, in the amount of $593.47 transfer in $593.47 from O-143-219 to O-143-103, is requested by Charles Brundell, that's moving, money from Reynolds on his copy or two, salaries.
So, move.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that was not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, since it is now, we'll go on to Commissioner, sir. Commissioner Ramey, do you have an update?
Yes. Okay. My update includes, I visited the Duval-Hamlin third grade classes with Judy Johnson and Maureen Aldrin, um, the, um, solid waste authority to give an update to the kids about recycling and also, um, just litter control in general. I think those two schools, the third grade classes, were probably the most questioning two classes we visited. They, uh, they really enjoyed the presentation and the dialogue back and forth. I also met with Larry Stutler of the EDA to discuss the day conflict for the candidates' forum that I discussed at the last meeting. And after coming up with some different days, I went over to the high school and met with student body president Cody Woodrum and teacher Paula Nelson and principal Bill Lempel to try to hammer out a day. And it seems as if we finally came up with a day that some of the candidates would agree on. I know that we're not going to have all the candidates show up, but the students from student government had been calling and emailing and letting me know that, you know, even if we don't have a lot of candidates, this was an event they were looking forward to. And they were asking that we please continue the progress to make sure it happens so they can experience this event. So we're going to make sure no matter, even if we don't have the big name candidates, we're going to host the candidates' forum so the students can experience that. During the evening of April twentieth, I attended the e-poll book training conducted by ESNS. And during that training, I was asked to contact the Secretary of State's office because he, the, uh, e-poll books, and we have Christie Scrags here that can explain what they are in more detail than I can, but we purchased e-poll books from ESNS. After purchasing those, the Secretary of State's office developed their own e-poll book, if I understand correctly. So ES, ESNS and the Secretary of State's office are, are in competition, if you will. And for us to be able to get our poll books up with ESNS, we have to have the Secretary of State work with us during that process. And I'm not saying the Secretary of State's office has purposely held us up, but we're it's a different system than what they have. There, there've been some obstacles. Christie, do you want to go into any more detail about what we've, now what we've faced? We have e-poll books that we're not going to be able to use this election. You want to explain what?
Well, we, we brought them up and they are using them.
Okay.
But I had to print every voter A through Z for them to use as a backup, just in case anything happens or comes up. Because I don't really trust that system where it was thrown in there real quick. So that's sort of like our backup. But I would like later on for us and the commission maybe to discuss checking out maybe the states, because I think that would be so much easier. This way, whenever someone votes and it's on there, then I've got to bring the paperwork back over here, load it up into the state's computer. This way, if you have the e-poll book from the state, it goes straight in there as soon as someone votes, there's no more. So that's something maybe later on to look at, especially if we want to bring these into the precincts, you know, later on with things.
And that means better if you have it out there in the precinct, far as keeping records of who votes and tracking that or?
Oh, yeah.
It's a more seamless process.
They're wonderful if, you know, if they're up and running real good and, you know, I think if we pull from the state's computer, I haven't seen, really got into their e-poll books, but it would just be so much easier because you would pull right there and there's no question if someone early voted or voted in a different precinct. I mean, there's no flipping through, printing all those poll book pages and flipping off, there's no more of that. And then if, say I'm working a precinct and you come in to vote and I pull you up and you're not in the poll book, normally they make you do a provisional. This way to pull right up and say where they should be. And actually you can hit directions and it would print directions and you can hand it right there to the voter if they don't know exactly where that's at and it does all kinds of stuff. So they've got them running over there, but they're sort of doing double the work just because, you know, it's so quick getting those in and.
And ESNS even indicated that we, in the future elections, if we had an IT person that would help.
Oh, yeah.
So it just seems like a lot of work for us to have to go through in the state's system. If you're going to use an e-poll book, I want to make sure it coincides with what the Secretary of State's office wants.
Oh, yeah. And there's, uh, when they showed them before, I mean, you could just get laptops and then just buy the signature pad and the printer and just put it straight into laptops and run them that way too. So I mean, that, I'm sure that's a lot cheaper than what was, the ones we have now cost. I'm not sure how much they exactly cost, but I'm sure it was a lot, that would be a lot cheaper, you know, later on, whenever you are ready to move that way of getting those and. Which we do have it now where, um, there's a lot of things you can do to those, but we have it blocked. Um, you could actually get an air change addresses and things, but we don't allow, you know, everybody to have the codes that we can get into the state with and stuff. So we still do that over here, but, and I think as of maybe two, three o'clock today, there's been like ninety-seven voters so far. That was for Friday, Saturday and today, in the early voting.
Thank you, Christie. Your line. On April the twenty-first, I attended the ceremony in front of the courthouse for the dedication, uh, the part of Route Three for Lance Corporal Rodney Bredeh. The event was well attended by the local state and even national office holders. The event was moving for many reasons, especially seeing that Miss, uh, Mr. Bredeh's mother, she was right on the front row in her wheelchair and you could tell just by looking at her face during the ceremony that it was a moving tribute to her son. And I think that with what happened yesterday with Osama bin Laden, we should always take the time necessary to thank our veterans, current military personnel and their families. Our high school band played some songs during the event and if anyone was there, they would be very proud to say they're from Lincoln County and those are our kids. They played the National Anthem, Anchors Away, The Marines hymn and some other selective patriotic songs. I met with Pat Polly regarding the McCorkle Community Center roof. They ran into some problems, but as far as I know, they've been resolved. I did go down to the community center after talking to him and looked at the situation. On April twenty-fifth, I attended the East Lincoln County Crime Watch meeting and, uh, as usual, there was a large number of people in attendance. And mainly the reason I attended was just to continue to show my support for the people of the crime watching. I contacted the West Virginia Division of Energy and NACO, which is the National Association of Counties, to inquire into possible state and federal grants. And the primary focus was to see if there was federal or state grants to help us put solar panels on the courthouse. As utility costs continue to go up, I felt that if we could do something in, in the way of offsetting the utility costs, maybe the money that would have been used to pay for the utility bills here at the courthouse can be put into a separate fund for us to do outreach across the county. Working with Scott Polly and the McCorkle Community Center Board, trying to find people to apply for the open board seat and hated to hear that Leanne had resigned, but as Scott said, that Leanne has her, uh, her hands in many different areas and trying to help people. And she did try to take a step back to reprioritize exactly the time she was putting in to make sure she was being as effective as she could be. I think that what her goal would be, would be to step up and to, uh, play a role in youth activities. I know that's for her heart is. Uh, I look forward to you guys on the board going back and discussing that possibility. I attended the following election trainings. I attended April eighteenth for the Washington District, April nineteenth, Duval District, April twenty-sixth, Sheridan District. And being able to go to those trainings helped me to understand more what election workers go through, but also being an election canvasser after the elections, it provided people in the audience, if they had a question for a commissioner, to be able to ask and to see exactly what we do as canvassers. I attended a meeting today with the mayor of West Hamlin in regards to the Upper Mud River Waterline Extension. And, uh, also I attended the Route Ten Coalition Meeting. We were honored to have with us Commissioner from Cavill County, Commissioner Bob Bailey and County Administrator from Cavill County, Chris Taylor. And the last thing I have is there's someone that each of us probably know that he's not doing very well today. He's having a hard time. I would just ask for each of us to keep Blaine Wilkerson in our prayers. That's all I have.
Please, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I attended the Bredeh dedication also on April twenty-first. I also attended the, we checked the voting machines for their validity. I've also had conversations concerning Happy Land Trail Systems with Ron Redgley and some other people concerning, uh, looking at other tracts of land in Lincoln County that might be able to sustain the trail system, working out something, uh, in that as it seems like the big ugly areas will be maybe unavailable to leases up. And then we really don't know where to go to from there. So I've made, uh, some contacts with, with large landowners and, and have talked with them concerning the limitation of liability associated with the trail systems where now they have ATV traffic on their, on the lands anyway. And, uh, and they're really not identified against any injuries that might occur on the land as well as if they allow the Happy Land Trail System to manage the trail system on the land, they wouldn't be identified for any damages, uh, or someone got hurt or something like that and traffic coming in under the, under the Happy Land Trail Systems. Uh, I think we need to look at anybody that's willing to help us with the development of the trail system as far as allowing us to use land. We need to remember, know that's what we're looking at. We're looking into different areas of the county, not just the parks area. And I think in looking at, from what I can find out now, we're probably going to have to have a hybrid system where we'll have to use some of our, uh, county roads that, uh, aren't paved that, uh, do have high ATV, UTV traffic now. We might be able to coordinate that into the trail system, connecting some of these originally planned under so that, uh, we can regulate the trails as far as the usage of those roads also and require safety equipment, things like that for people that do ride on the trails. That's all I have.
Mr. McCamper?
Excuse me. April nineteenth, Commissioner Ramey and we presented a check to Lincoln County Board of Education, uh, in the amount of $100,000 to begin the development of the football field, uh, project, uh, at the new Lincoln County High School. And, uh, this is a project that we had started earlier, uh, the paper certainly has covered and did some good reporting on, but it's a need for our students in our county. So we'll continue to look at how we might be able to support that. Also that evening, uh, after the commission meeting, I attended the election school that was held here at the courthouse and tried to look for things that had changed since the last time and, uh, with Commissioner Ramey and, and staff, uh, it assured me that one thing by having the additional schools that, uh, people are able to ask more questions and getting more out of the training. April twenty-first, along with the other commissioners and other dignitaries, uh, I did, uh, attend and provide the introduction for the Rodney Bredeh ceremony that was held here at the courthouse. And, uh, certainly, uh, great Mr. Ramey that, um, the event was, uh, was definitely a heartfelt, uh, activity, but definitely one of those things that, uh, needed to be done. And I think that from the Class of sixty-five to all those present, uh, it was appreciated from the family. On April twenty-second, uh, we conducted the public test for the voting machines for early and regular voting, uh, which, uh, early voting has already started and the election is May the fourteenth. As mentioned earlier in the meeting, I did meet with Rick McDowell, Michael Webb, the people from Casto Technical on April twenty-fifth to review the HVAC grant and were able to work out the figures to reach the payment that we approved here this evening. In addition to that, we have asked Rick to start monitoring the utility bills for the past year and the coming year and see if there's a, uh, fluctuation, a difference in the amount of use, not necessarily the cost, but the amount of use of the kilowatts or, or the MCS, to see if the new system is, not only, we know it's helping in the temperature control departments across the whole courthouse, but we want to see it also makes it more efficient. And we did discuss about the capabilities of this system and it does have that capability to add on a monitoring program where the, uh, once the building is closed at four thirty of the evening, most people leave, that the system could go into a, a resting stage where it would not take as much energy and, and maybe save us some money there. So we're going to look into that. April twenty-sixth, I attended the Farmland Protection Board meeting as a representative of the commission. And basically we're still having some discussion about is it possible to have farmland protection when the landowner does not own the mineral? And, uh, and the issue we discussed a little bit at the last meeting and it seems that the people in Morgantown, the geological survey people are willing to work with us and try to determine the, are the minerals anything of value as we heard this evening about, uh, one person's thinking that their values, you know, there wasn't any coal there. Well, if we can prove by geological survey drills and whatever that, that there's not going to be any future disturbance, then it may be possible to buy somebody's farm as far as, uh, the agreements that are worked out with the farmland protection, meaning that people can live on the farm, but the farm can be put into a preservation and the people can see some money for the value of it while they're still living there. So we're working to make that happen. Again, I did, uh, along with Commissioner Ramey, met with Mayor Gu about getting the finalized, uh, agreement put forth and he has, uh, recommended and we agree that, uh, we should, uh, let the town of West Hamlin use their present employees, if they're willing to do that, outside their normal workday, whether it be on weekends or after hours, to, uh, install this water line. So, uh, we, uh, basically worked up an understanding today to make that happen rather than hire a contractor to come in. So I think they're fixing to move forward on that in the next month or so. In relation to the Route Ten meeting, we did have that this evening with, uh, with representatives from the EDA and the Cavill County Commission. And basically talked about not only the progress, but we asked each representative to come with a plan for by next September that we can submit to DOH as to, that what are we going to do far as more safety issues between I-64 and Quarter G going fifty-nine miles of, of state Route Ten? And ask each to prioritize the three projects that they'd like to have done and so that we can maybe start on that and have them submitted, uh, to start on the next budget year. So we're continuing to do that. Uh, I have a couple of things that I'll just add. One is Alan Holder had sent a letter basically saying that it's during the recent incident in Lincoln County involving both flooding and power outage. He says, "I became aware of resources that were available from surrounding counties that we weren't aware of, didn't know they existed." So what he has suggested is that on May the twelfth, that we have a meeting here in, at his center, uh, in Hamlin and to what he says, West Hamlin, called Badress. And invite everybody in and let's look at an inventory. What can you offer in case of emergency? And make sure that, that we know what Wayne County, surrounding counties, Putman, Boone, Cavill have in a way of emergency services that they might be able to loan, come in and help, those kind of things. So I think it's a, the right move on, on his part and the other directors to come up with that kind of information. And the other thing is on the courthouse generator, uh, we have one here, but it is not big enough. And what, and talking with Alan, what he has suggested is that, uh, if the commission would like us to give him information, sure, what do you want when power is out at the courthouse? He will come with, get the information as to price and the type of generator that we need if we want to have everything running. And, uh, I sort of think if we can afford it, that's what we should do because what we have is not, uh, doing the, the job it needs to be, but it's just not big enough either. So, uh, in my discussion with him, I asked him to think about how you might be able to do that, but what could we do with the one we have? Is there some public entity that we could use this one to move it somewhere else and it would do the job that is needed? So at some point here soon, I suspect we'll have a report, a request, update something from Alan as to the new generator. as to the new generator.
Thanks, sir.
I'm not really sure what that output is. It does about three major things, lights, computers, but no heat in there. So.
And just very few lights.
And it was a leftover money we had from a grant that we decided to try to use and it wasn't enough to get the job done. So that's all I have. Thank you. No one else? Then we take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Early.
He said we're early.
Stand and adjourn.
Huh?
He said we're early. I said we're early here.
I will tell you that.
Don't forget commissioners, May the 20th at 9:00 with canvasser elections.
Y'all should still check Will Bean on him.
Yeah, this is the last two. He had some other things to do.
I'm saying he's the other guy when I'm down here.